It's actually 4:10, and I do apologize to the audience for the delay. We just came out of some administrative hearings. And I'm going to first, we have opening exercises by the Honorable Sandy Balfour.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy Chair. First of all, we're in December. December is the end of the year. It's a time for reflection, and I want to reflect over some numbers. Two thousand four hundred killed, one thousand four hundred wounded. Ooh, I had your attention. Some may think that I'm reflecting over the 9/11 that our country endured, but actually, I'm talking about what happened on Sunday, December 7th, 1941, the attack on Pearl Harbor. It was the day after that President Roosevelt declared the 7th of December, a date which will live in infamy, but instead of living in infamy, it has a tendency to be overlooked. Luckily, we have over 22,000 veterans here in Citrus County. Many enjoy the opportunity to reach out to students who are in our classrooms during Veterans Week. I want to thank all the teachers who invited some of them into their classrooms so that they may share their stories. And when you consider that the most recent broad attack on our homeland was September 11, 2001, we need to remember that those students that are sitting in our classrooms, many of which in eighth grade who are responsible for the civics test, don't have, they weren't, some of them weren't even born. And the seniors in our classrooms don't have a personal reflection of that, no recollection, because they were just too young. Having those veterans in our classrooms to give that first-person account is such a valuable, valuable moment. And I made a promise to one of those veterans who came to my classroom for 15 years, Ted Archibald. He was a friend who died this past summer. He served as a U.S. Marine during World War II, and he was a Pearl Harbor survivor. I promised him, I'm gonna keep talking about you. If you can't get up to my classroom, trust me, I will make sure the kids remember. I'm not in the classroom, but Ted, if you're listening, I promised. So with that said, as we honor, as we go through our pledge of allegiance, please remember December 7th. A lot of lives were lost, and a lot of people sacrificed, and a lot of people chose not to be recognized, but we have an obligation to remember. So with that said, thank you to the educators that are so committed to keeping the days of sacrifice fresh in the minds of our youth. As we say the pledge, let's remember them all. Thank you. We stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Balfour. Before we adopt the agenda, I do need to make a couple of additions. The first are just general presentation additions that I'd like to make. Under Section B, sorry, make sure I do it here, under, excuse me, Sections 4B, if we can add recognition, recognition, I'm sorry, recognition, recognition of the Art in a Box, wow, that was a tough one, Art in the Box, Art Outside of the Box Contest winners sponsored by the Citrus County Chronicle, and then if we can add C for Salvation Army. And then the chairman is going to add for good cause, under Business Support Services, Section B-12, for a discussion on impact fees and interlocal agreements with the Board of County Commissioners. And also for good cause, under School Operations, A-7, we're going to add approval of out-of-state travel requests for educational services to attend a math leadership summit, and I'll go through the details on that as we get, or we'll have the presentation on that. So if someone could make a motion to include that, I would appreciate that.
I move to approve the agenda as recommended by our superintendent. Second?
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the agenda as suggested by the, as recommended by the superintendent and as modified by the chair. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. And we will, we have our presentations at 5:00 PM, so then we will move over to Business Services.
Citizens comments.
I'm sorry, citizens comments. Do we have any green cards?
No.
We also have a second opportunity at 5:15. And you know what? Thank you. Mr. Wright, did you want to introduce for us, or just, I mean, we're all family here.
Hey, this is Carly.
Hi, Ms. Carly. We try to pretend to be formal at times, but...
We're not.
We're not. Approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by the Honorable Doug Dodd, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. And if you can have the donations read, please.
We have a $3,700 donation to Citrus High School from the Eminence Quanis Club, a $500 donation to Citrus High School from the Citrus County Sheriff's Office, a $4,260 donation to Crystal River High School from the Eminence Quanis Club, and a $15,000 donation to Eminence Middle School from XCO.
Thank you, and we again thank our community for supporting their school district. Business and Support Services.
Here to approve Budget Amendment Number Two.
I move to approve Budget Amendment Number Two, amended October 24th.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Budget Amendment Number Two, amended October 24th. Discussion? Questions?
I always ask the question, why more ARR-A?
That is the Race to the Top funds that are still hanging out there. They got a one-time extension, so they're still having some, some money roll through there to complete the project at hand that they first applied for. And I think most of it has to do with the evaluations, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you for your information.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clodder, we didn't hear...
What information, all the Race to the Top extension?
Oh, yes.
The state of Florida did offer an extension to the Race to the Top. We applied for two extensions, our MOUs in the area of two, which was offering those more rigorous courses. We had some students, or some teachers actually attend some training this past summer over from Crystal River High School for the biomedical. So after they had now been trained, Marsha Ball is coming back and providing us with some direction in regards to the equipment she's gonna need for the biomedical number four class. So the extension, pretty much those will be extended by the end of probably February, March. Okay? The other one is basically for the development of the end-of-term exams that deal with the teacher evaluations. So the teachers are actually being compensated for their stipends, either it's after school or substitute release time. So that was in relation to MOU number eight on teacher evaluations.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. If there's no objection, I'm gonna go ahead and take C and come back to B-12 and for human resources. So no, no, you to come forward. We're gonna take, we'll take Section C, Human Resources, Johnny Bishop.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'd like to request the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations.
You can just give us an extra second. Board members, whenever somebody would like, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the school, was it school, the recommendations.
Well, second?
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve instructional and support recommendations. Any discussion, comments?
Just can you explain the line of duty with the asterisks?
Yes, ma'am.
Line of duty is days awarded to those who have been injured in the line of duty. The asterisk means that it was an addition since you, since the original white rod was developed.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
Any other discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Board members, I'm gonna go back to our addition of B-12, impact fees and interlocal agreement. I'm bringing this up for discussion because recently, and I'm looking for my date, the, on December 2nd, the Board of County Commissioners, as I understand it, voted two things, or with three implications. One is to remove concurrency, and we'll ask Mr. Bradshaw here for some clarification on that. The other is to remove school impact fees or bring them down to zero, along with all the other county impact fees. They did not vote to do that. They voted to have a workshop on January 13th, 2005, at 2:30 PM. And then the other action is that they have a question or that they want to review for discussion or to review the interlocal agreement. I wasn't entirely clear whether they meant all interlocal agreements or whether they meant the interlocal agreement for impact fees, because there is a lot of interlocal agreements. The first thing I was gonna ask is for Mr. Bradshaw to explain, well, there's two things. This board has, since I've been on it for the last four years, and to my knowledge in the years previously, has unanimously voted to have impact fees. And most recently, in February 11th, 2014, this board unanimously passed the most recent impact study by Clancy Mullen, Duncan &amp; Associates, to extend that over to the Board of County Commissioner for approval of that study and to approve the impact fees at 100%. It wasn't until December 2nd that we now have evidently an answer to that, to that Before I get into my own feelings on it, what I want to do is first talk about the concurrency, because that was the thing they actually took action on. And so I've asked Mr. Bradshaw, he would want to explain to, at this point, what he understands took place and what options at this point that we've had. And Mr. Bradshaw, you can do that. And if you would also just for, in particular, for Mr. Dodd to know on the, on the record, I know he's probably done his own research, but concurrency and where that was something that this board has continued to desire and what actions that that means.
Mr. Dixon can probably explain what concurrency means.
Oh, Mr. Dixon, I'm sorry. I didn't see that you'd come...
A little better.
Come in that. Let me do that first then. Mr. Dixon, if you'd come, I apologize, I didn't see you in the audience. Mr. Dixon, could you just do a quick explanation again on concurrency, school concurrency?
School concurrency is basically, in around 2006, the legislature required all school districts to have concurrency, and that means that there's a system in place to ensure that new development that occurs, that we have schools that are capable of meeting that demand. For roads, it's the same thing, that the road system is up to speed. If a new project is gonna have 300 homes and it's gonna create X amount of traffic, that the roads in that general area are up to the level of service that's required to accommodate that type of development. So concurrency is basically something that was required by the state legislature around 2006. Our concurrency interlocal agreement was adopted by the school board, the county government, and the cities in 2008. It has been updated since then to reflect the most current data in 2012. Basically, it's an insurance policy. It's not something that we've utilized since it was adopted, because we haven't had enough development to warrant it. It basically only applies to new subdivisions. It doesn't apply to any existing residential lots. It doesn't apply to any existing apartment buildings, only new development. And I contacted Hernando County today, Marion County today, to find out what the status as of today is with regards to their concurrency, and they both still have concurrency. As far as its practical applications, you know, it's something that we, we have, that we can utilize if we need or when we need. It hasn't been something that has come into play in the past six or eight years, because we haven't needed to use it. And we haven't, we haven't definitely, we have definitely not slowed down anybody's development by requiring concurrency. But to me, it's kind of a common sense tool that government should use to make sure that it has adequate services when it permits, things that are gonna draw down demand on that service.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes, and so the law has, it's changed, though, since it was passed in 2006. It's not only required, it's now optional. It's optional. And did that just recently change, or...
About two years ago.
About two years ago.
About two years ago. The, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Mr. Dixon.
Don, go ahead.
The, what ended up happening was the legislature passed a statute, it was 163.318, which required concurrency, and it was mandated that all the local governments, the municipalities, county, and school board would adopt an interlocal agreement to address all of the issues that are contained in 163.3180. Then they rescinded that and made it an optional, where you can, it's optional to have the items that are issued, that are listed in 163.3180. You don't have to follow those. That's an option that the counties and municipalities and the school districts can or cannot follow, where as it was required, now it's not required. I, I've talked to Chuck Siddy, Chuck with Marion and Hernando. I've talked to, I don't know, there's probably a couple counties that maybe got away, got rid of concurrency, but the vast majority of counties still have concurrency as part of their interlocal agreements. It's a little more restrictive. The problem is, is, and what I have to go and figure out, is there's still another statute, 163.31777, which states that the county, the school board, and the municipality still have to have a public schools interlocal agreement to address certain needs. And if those issues are contained in this interlocal agreement, then we'll have issues because they can't get rid of, that's a shell. You have to have this particular interlocal agreement. The 3180 section could get added to it and, you know, and made more comprehensive, but you at least have to have a baseline standard, which is defined by the other statute. So I'm gonna, I don't know if they need, I don't think they can just get rid of the interlocal agreement, period, because there is a mandate by the other statute that you have to have an interlocal agreement to address certain issues that are underneath the 31777 statute.
And so with concurrency as it's now in effect, we basically have a seat at the table when they're planning new developments. Is that right?
We have a seat at the table, but if, I mean, currently, we, if we had to require a developer to contribute to the school system's infrastructure, we have a mechanism to do that through concurrency. And like Mr. Bradshaw said, if you have the agreement in place that requires us to do all these things without concurrency, it's fairly one-sided. I mean, we're, we have a seat at the table, but we don't have any way to require county government or a developer to do anything. I mean, we're basically just there for consulting. And that's, that's my only concern, whether, I think that if we're gonna do away with concurrency, then I have concerns about having all these other provisions in place that require us to do all these things without some mechanism to achieve concurrency.
What is, what is the driving force to, what is the issue about concurrency that's on the table? It's a negative. I'm not seeing a negative here from the way it's being painted.
Well, I don't think there is a negative. I'm a planner, and I think that everyone should plan. So that to have, you know, to have a requirement that we provide all these services and no way to pay for them, is, it doesn't really make a whole lot of sense to me. But I don't see, I think that if the Board of County Commissioners had determined that they want to do away with school concurrency, I think that the school board should have input into that and had, at least have some mechanism to modify this agreement so that we're not placed in a position, because we're statutorily required to provide schools. You know, it's not something that we can opt out of. And, yeah, I read through this agreement. It's not the best agreement in the world. It's very long, and there may be a way to make it more succinct and workable, but the idea of concurrency is that we have in place a way, a mechanism, to achieve the level of service that we're required to provide. And it's like the prepayment of an impact fee, is basically what concurrency would be.
Simplified version, thank you.
If you do away with impact fees and you do away with concurrency, then you don't have any way to meet those demands, except with your general fund or your capital budget that's diminished over time. And I think from a larger standpoint with regards to transportation, and I know the school board's not directly involved with that, but indirectly you are, I mean, it's the same thing. If you don't have impact fees to pay for those roads, you're gonna have to pay for those roads with added lump tax.
Ms. Bryant?
I was just wondering if they're gonna do away with the impact fees for everybody. Well, that's okay, I guess, in the words of Spike Fitzpatrick. We wanna be treated like everybody, but we haven't then, because they reduced our impact fees and they didn't reduce others. Know what I'm saying? With the percentage. So I'd like fair treatment. And I would like for there to be concurrency.
Well, I, I agree, and I don't think they have to have concurrency. I think that they can opt out of that. I think that, you know, that's an option, that they, that they can opt out, but they do still have to have a public schools interlocal agreement that follows the other statute.
We still need a mechanism, in essence, that if, what we have, we still, what you're saying is have to have some legal place at the table, conversation at the table, should a developer or something come in that would have impact to the schools?
Well, 163.31777 says that in a minimum, the interlocal agreement must address the following issues. A process by which each, each local government, district, school board agree and base their plans on consistent projections of growth. A process to coordinate, share information. Participation by effective local government. I mean, it's got, you know, you have to put these processes and procedures into place. You know, concurrency made it a lot stronger for the school district in regards to controlling development, to make sure that we built schools in the right places, that, you know, we didn't have all the development in one area, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck. So, because if you had some base on, on seats available, needs, or place a burden back on the developer to come up with some solutions to the problems that we were gonna face, you know, by overbuilding one area of the county. But there's still a basic, you know, there's still a basic form that they have to comply with underneath this other statute. So I'm not quite sure. I'm gonna have to go back. I don't know, I'm gonna get with Chuck as far as if there's another interlocal agreement, but I don't think you just do away with the interlocal agreement that contains the, the items that are contained from Florida statute 163.31777.
If the interlocal agreement references the concurrency agreement, then that would still at this point then provide that the concurrency agreement then would have to be in place, or you'd have to then have a modification to the interlocal agreement.
Have to modify.
Ms. Powers, I want to give you an opportunity.
What is the benefit to, yes, you say, to do this? What is, yes, and it's just, and are you saying just schools, or are you saying other things?
With regards to impact fees or concurrency?
Concurrent.
I don't think there is a benefit to the VOCC, to eliminate school concurrency. It doesn't really have anything to do with them, other than they provide us with information so that we can plan for their approvals. I mean, I, I don't wanna say that, you know, like I said, we have not required anyone to do anything since we adopted school concurrency. In theory, if we had a situation where we needed to have a developer provide, you know, an upfront payment to, so that we could meet the demands of that development in the school system, we would have that. You're in good, you're in a good position with regards to your land that you have in different parts of the county and your schools and what kind of shape they're in. You know, there aren't very many scenarios that could require you to, you know, have to change course in what's already planned, that I can see. But to me, you know, the county wants to eliminate school concurrency from the interlocal agreement, and I think the rest of the interlocal agreement needs to be, if it's removed, I think the rest of the interlocal agreement needs to be restructured so that we're not required to do all these things that are, that are contained within it without concurrency, because it's basically an instrument that allows us to, to coordinate with county government and the cities on what we do, which we don't really need an interlocal agreement to coordinate on things. I mean, we, we can do that without having all those things spelled out in this procedure, but the reason we basically agreed to that was because of concurrency.
Can you see concurrency, the concurrency agreement as being a roadblock to development? Is that the perception?
I think it's considered, not a roadblock, but it's just an extra step that's required or could be required. And if we get to the point where it becomes an extra step that's required, we, we would really need it. I mean, we'd need it to be in place. It's not something that we're utilizing right now to slow anybody down or create any kind of friction for development. And, you know, we had not issued any correspondence telling anyone they had to do anything with regards to concurrency since it was first implemented.
What is the purpose of the meeting on January 13th, 2:30?
The purpose of the meeting is to have a draft ordinance that the county wants to adopt at a public hearing, to have a three-year moratorium on impact fees. They want to, they want to place all impact fees on hold for a three-year period.
And what would that do to us?
Essentially, it will not affect us in the short term, because we have adequate funds for our capital projects that we currently have in our work plan. It potentially, or at some point, we wouldn't, we might not be able to fund a large construction project when that time comes. And it will also create what I believe to be issues with refunds, and, you know, if you have, if you have a moratorium and you're not collecting a fee and others have already paid the fee, that creates a fairness issue, and I can foresee some, some issues with that. But from the county's standpoint, if they choose across the board to have a moratorium on impact fees, it's, as I understand it from talking to my colleagues in the two joint counties, that's the county commissioners' prerogative, you know, they get to make that decision. I mean, the school board can recommend something, but it's really up to them with regard to whether or not they choose to collect impact fees. With concurrency, it may be a different situation. I'm not sure about that.
Well, that was my question, is it also up to them on concurrency? But yet, Mr. Bradshaw's saying there may be another interlocal agreement that can usurp or can, they can't go around.
There's a statutory requirement to have a public, you know, schools interlocal agreement that addresses a lot of the things that concurrency interlocal agreement addresses. You know, you know, one's a, you know, one's a Pontiac and one's a Lamborghini, you know? It's just that much more complicated and, and more, addresses more detail. It's just that much more complicated and, and more, addresses more details, but there's a, you know, there's a requirement to have an interlocal agreement that's going to address, it'll put us at the table and take some.
Mr. Dixon, one of the things that, that has happened, it appears, is that some that have gone to lobby the Board of County Commissioner and that have come here in the past have tried to separate the issue of concurrency and impact fees as being very separate issues. The school board has looked at them as, as more symbiotic because if we don't have a Board of County Commissioner that is adhering to the impact fee study and is modifying it or in this case eliminating or moratorium them, the collection of them, moratorium, sorry, they are not collecting as the, as the study shows, then, then you can't then provide for the infrastructure that we're statutorily required to. And therein is that, for lack of a term, insurance policy through the concurrency or in this case, a modified interlocal agreement. Is that correct?
It is. I think the concurrency doesn't come into play unless we're in a situation where we need to require a developer to provide something that we can't provide easily with our existing funding sources. And I can think of times in the past where that would have been useful, like when we were in, in a time when we were having, you know, 10 times the growth that we're having now and plating a lot of new subdivisions. I don't necessarily foresee it as an issue for the next few years, but as a, from a public policy standpoint, it's hard for me to support doing away with it because, you know, it just forces you to, to live within your means from a county standpoint.
The challenge now with their indication that on January 13th, they're going to workshop and, and I believe take action on, on suspending impact fees, is concurrency in an interlocal agreement protects us if we have a large developer come in. But much of the growth in Citrus County has been, in particular, the Central Ridge area where we have had existing lots that are platted. And there comes in the impact fee question. That's really what I believe the study tried to indicate. So if we have, you know, nothing coming in, we, we have a challenging situation. I would remind the board and perhaps either Mr. Dixon or, or Mr. Blocker can, can share or verify that I believe within the last 10 or so years, we have built two schools or three schools, if you include Renaissance, as well as improvements through the use of impact fees. And how much debt service do we have as a result of those particular projects?
I know Central Ridge used impact fees. I'm not sure about the other schools.
Renaissance?
Not sure if we used impact fees there or not. Yeah.
Okay.
But we did use it at Central Ridge. We have used them for. For.
And then the La Canto project.
Cafeteria.
The cafeteria was used.
We bus garage.
And bus garage.
Excess buses for increased student enrollment. So there has been a use of fees in that respect.
And the debt service on all of those projects?
There is none.
There's no debt service?
Correct.
So we're paying no money out, but the Avalorin taxpayer is affecting and we're not taking out of our general funds?
Correct.
But of course, at that time, the growth was pretty strong in the county and, and now we haven't seen the continued growth. We've seen a declining student enrollment, so there is an issue there that the county commission is going to address.
Has there been any study to show that reducing impact fees has led to an increase in construction permits? Mr. Dixon?
No, I have not heard of any. And that is something that comes up quite often and it, it really comes down to, you know, from an economic development standpoint, you get development when you can meet the needs of the development, when you do have the infrastructure in place, when you have problems and when you stagnate, when you can't meet that demand. But the, my, my counterpart down in Hernando County told me today that a, that an elementary school can add 30% to the value of a, of a new home and depending on that the elementary school can actually create that much demand for a neigh, in a neighborhood, you know, as opposed to a, a neighborhood that doesn't have a, an elementary school that, that's sought after. So the, the school system has a really important role in, in creating demand for new homes. It's, it's not something, if you, if you have an overcrowded school system or a school system that's not performing well, it can really diminish the value of home sales.
Mr. Bradshaw, at what point does the Board of County Commission have authority over our budget?
Yeah, I guess they only have authority, yeah, over, over our budget. That might be the board.
Okay, that was my, that was my question.
Oh, my question.
Are, are, are we considered then a taxing authority and an independent sovereign government from this?
We're on political subdivision. I mean, we're, yes.
I ask this question because it appears that year after year, when impact fees come in, that the legislature has put forth this one small policy that allows the Board of County Commission to determine the funds that we have available in our school district, but they have no statutory control, they have no obligation to our budgets. And I guess my question is, is why can we not set our impact fee by putting in the interlocal agreement, asking that the Board of County Commissioner approve the school board's setting of that and upholding that in the interlocal agreement?
Well, I think the statute says that the, the Board of County, you know, that the local government or the Board of County Commissioners can set the impact fees by ordinance. So that's what's out there.
Could we set, could we make an agreement with the interlocal agreement that that becomes a pass-through that they are?
They, uh, I guess, I mean, they'd have to agree that we could do that. They would still have to vote on it and it would still be their, their vote to, to set the impact.
But then it would be a violation of the interlocal agreement.
Yeah, but I, because I don't think that they can delegate the authority of impact fees over to the school district based upon what, out of the statute. I mean, we could come to an agreement with them that they would, I'm assuming we could come to an agreement with them, but.
Just seems that year after year, we have this same argument where we believe that this board has, at least historically, believed in impact fees because they are a means of collecting. You don't collect them in one year, you collect them over a period of time, and that they are then available for a purchase, I mean, for a, either a purchase or a increased capacity capital improvement, such as a large school, such as a water plant. And the question becomes is, we are not being able to then budget and make those decisions. We've already had the state take away our capital dollars from point, from 2.0 down to 1.5. We have virtually no PICO money that we used to get. The only way that we collect money has been for these projects is through impact fees. When they take that away, that means now we're going to have to affect, if we are in the situation that we are, if the growth happens the way they hope, are we not putting ourselves into a more difficult position quicker with growth? And I want growth, but I want growth to be able to be planned for.
You know, you're, you're calling a 30% increase in the value of a house that's built near an elementary school. That ALMA says that, they're very, ALMA says that this is an advantage for the Board of County Commissioners, if you have an increase in property value and increase in the ability to tax more people coming in because this, this school is there. You're doing something positive for the county, not negative for the county.
Well, I think with most businesses and with individuals who are relocating into an area to work in a business, that the school system, because of their age group, is very important in determining whether or not they choose to live there. And, but going back to Mr. Kennedy's question, what they have on the agenda for, for January 13th at 2:30 is they directed staff to bring back an ordinance amendment to rescind the assessment of impact fees in Citrus County for three years, period. So they're, they're basically having a public hearing to, to have a moratorium for three year, for a three-year period. They're also going to move ahead at the same time and have an impact fee workshop in February to update the study so that the study is up to date, even though the fees are in abeyance. So in theory, they would come back in three years. And I see all kinds of problems with this, but this is what, this is what's being proposed. And on, so that's one issue, is the impact fees. And if you, if you feel that, like you, you have in the past, that, that you're, you want to collect impact fees and have them at the same level as other county departments, which has been basically the school board's position over time, you could send that message and say, you know, we, we support the county commission's decision, however, we feel, you know, we, we don't support it, but we, we acknowledge the Board of County Commissioners' prerogative to, to have a moratorium, however, we, we, we feel strongly that it's a mistake and that we should collect the fees at the level, you know, 100% or whatever it is, at the reduced rate because of the new study. And, you know, I don't think that there, as far as the legal part of it, I don't think the, the school board has the authority to, to, to not let the county commission move ahead with a moratorium on impact fees, only a recommendation that they, they not do it. I mean, it's like you just send them the recommendation and then they do whatever they're going to do.
The only impact fees are dollars that are procured are only from residential. The commercial buildings are not paying.
They are, they are paying the school impact.
So they pay the Dollar Generals, all these different places that are popping up are not paying any school impact fees? Okay, only residential?
Yeah, they pay.
And, and Ms. Ballford, that's a great question. And the follow-up that during the board meeting that they had said, the Board of County Commissioners, and, and this is a question for both Mr. Blocker and Mr. Dixon, is, well, we're, that they would be generating by not having impact fees, that they would stimulate the, the growth and therefore stimulate a new tax base. And my question is, because one of the comments said was that by reducing them, they would be able to stimulate some of the lower end housing market that was more vulnerable. So my question is this, if I have a $100,000 piece of property and under a typical scenario, if it's a $100,000 taxable piece of property, how much capital school impact fee am I going to be collecting or would, do we collect for one year?
For impact fees?
Mm-hmm. No, no, not for impact fees.
You get the 1.5 mils.
Which would be?
15 bucks, 150 bucks.
$150. So for every new structure, we'd have $150. The school impact fee is roughly $2,000?
It is, but it's currently, age-restricted communities don't pay a school impact fee. So 55 and over communities, and it is a tiered structure right now so that homes that are.
I think it's on average, though, right around, around 2,000. So it would take us 150 divided by 2,000, which is approximately 17 years, to collect just the amount lost in one family home of impact fees. And we would not be collecting the capital improvement dollars during that time. We would just be offsetting what wasn't collected. So then that question is, of course, where do we get that capital impact, those monies that we aren't collecting? We're going to have to get them from the rest of our budget.
You would have, you would have effectively created a new tax, you, or you would need a new tax to get the dollars that you lost from the impact fees. And maybe just a commentary for myself, is I hope, don't be short sighted to say that we don't need these for the future because you're going to now say the current taxpayers through property taxes have got to subsidize or pay for these improvements, you know, expansions, whatever it may be, that currently impact fees are, would pay, will be paying for, for those, for the new growth in the county.
And are impact fee dollars only used for new schools?
Any new student stations, yes.
So what about vehicles?
School buses, if they need new, more buses added to the fleet based on the increased enrollment.
And any other capacity increasing infrastructure?
Yes, for capacity increasing for new student stations.
So that doesn't necessarily mean just land or buildings?
No.
Or sewer plant.
Yes, yes. The piece of the increased capacity, the sewer plant has been used for impact fees.
Mr. Dunne?
Now, the impact fee has to be used within a seven-year timeframe, is that right? To show.
Correct.
The impact for that year. So my question is, on our new school plan for, our forecast for new schools, how far out do we go? We got a 10-year plan on that for new schools?
It goes out to 20 years, I believe. Let me clarify something on this seven years. Seven years is just that, to add to our capacity. So the school doesn't have to be built in seven years. I mean, that's, that's been a point of contention. The land has to be purchased and it's in our inventory and because it's been delayed because we entered an economic downturn, it's still there in our inventory for that purpose and it'll be used for that. It's a, we can't always build what we need exactly when we need to build it, exactly where it's needed. Sometimes we have to phase things in, sometimes we have to add capacity in one school so that we can add more buildings, a future date, and do things in phases. And that's exactly what we're doing in the Central Ridge or in Pine Ridge area with that school is we have, you know, when we put that in our work plan, it was in the five-year work plan or the six-year work plan. Now it's been moved out, it's been like year nine, I think, in this year, in this year's work plan, but it's still intended to be, to service that area and that's the most likely area where it'll be needed. But it doesn't have to be built and operational in seven years. And that seven-year number comes from the county ordinance. The county can change that ordinance. There's also provisions in the existing ordinance where we could ask for extension if we had impact fee revenue that was sitting in the account and we, we had a need to have that extended because of the economic downturn, the county's ordinance can extend it another seven years. So there's already provisions for extensions and the county has gotten extensions for other types of impact fees.
Mr. Dixon, is enrollment up or down right now?
This year it's up for the first time in a few years. We're up a few students this year, I think.
Actually, the preliminary numbers in the F T count from October indicate, from what we had forecasted for the budget, we're up 200 students, mainly in high school.
Wow. Yeah, I was going to say, that's not where we've expected it either. Board members, we're going to be coming up to a 5 o'clock time certain. I, I think we need to either decide that we're going to pause here and come back to it, or if you want to give staff direction.
I don't know who's going to the January 13th meeting, we're going to be here.
And, and I think that's a great question because, you know, in the past, we have sent letters, we have sent Chuck, we have sent the chair, we have all gone. And each time, we have been met with the same answer, and that was that they decided to do regardless of what our recommendation was, which is somewhat frustrating. And Ms. Bryant, the only concern that I have with the approach we've had in the past is treat us the same as everyone else's. They're wanting to, which is to zero us out. And the trouble I have is every other impact fee that they collect, they have statutory control over. This is the one impact fee they do not, as far as the budget that, that follows it. With that, I guess what I'm going to do is go ahead and have us pause for a second, Mr. Dixon, because we have a 5 o'clock. And I'm going to just recess for one minute so that we can let those that are out there come in. So we're going to recess for one minute.